There we are. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call the order, the Port Orchard City Council Work Study Session for June 16th. In pursuit to the governor's stay at home and safe, stay safe order, we will be doing our meeting via Zoom this evening. So with that, I will lead us in the pledge. I got my flag here and let's see if it doesn't work. I gotta turn my virtual background off. It doesn't work with the won't show the flag. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty. Wonderful. All right, let's we are to our first order of business, but our consultant isn't here yet, Mr. Bond. So do we want to shuffle this agenda here and maybe talk about multifamily property tax exemption requirements first?
Yeah, I think they may be under the impression that we're starting at seven. I didn't send them a Zoom meeting invite until today and they made, I think, last time they were here, it was at seven.
Okay. Well, we've also got the, so Janine just sent out a new one.
Yeah, we forgot to publish the Zoom link. We published, so that just got sent out on the website. So, but I did see that Nick forwarded my link earlier. So let's start with the multifamily tax exemption requirements in the chapter 3.48. And you'll notice we have five items on the agenda and they're all Nick Bonds. So, welcome to the Nick Bond Show.
All right, and I'm just trying to scroll through the packet to the right page. So the multifamily tax exemption item that's on your agenda, this has been something we've been working on, it seems like for, for well over a year now. When you were approached probably 18 months ago by a developer next to the Fred Meyer on Sedgwick, who was seeking to have their property designated for multifamily tax exemption. When that request came in, we did not have any process for considering whether we ought to amend our tax exemption map to include that property for the eight-year exemption that they were seeking, or whether 12-year with an affordable housing component would be more appropriate. And generally, being that the city is pretty new at the multifamily tax exemption process as a, using that as a tool, we wanted to develop kind of a process and an approach to how to better utilize that tool. So we've kicked this around at the land use committee and I think we started in 2019 and then committee membership changed. And so we revisited that issue. Once we finally had a meeting this year in June, we were delayed by, by COVID. And the approach that Carrie and I worked to develop and Carrie Sully from the DCD is here today, if you haven't seen her there yet. And we worked on an approach and it was a three-pronged approach. We wanted to, number one, what we realized for the affordable tax exemption for the 12-year exemption is that a market rate apartment in Port Orchard qualifies for 12-year tax exemption without the developer really doing anything out of the ordinary. And that's because the median income for the county skews so high, mostly because of Bainbridge Island and the north end of the county having higher incomes than the south end of the county. So for the 12-year exemption, what we're proposing is to really raise the bar on what constitutes affordable housing. And in your packet, there's a memo that says revised tax exemption criteria at the top. And so we're creating three types of tax exemptions, the first being the affordable housing with transit access type. So our goal here is to offer 12-year exemptions, provided that 20% of all of the units in the project are at least 10% below fair market rent for 12 years. And then it's the, the fair market rent and annual income that is used to determine fair market rent varies depending on the unit type. And so if you're providing a studio apartment, we're wanting you to hit, be able to serve people who are earning 40% of median income. If you have a one-bedroom unit, it's 65% of median income. If you have a two-bedroom, it's 75. And if you have a three-bedroom, it's 80%. And these are the same percentages that the city of Seattle uses to deploy for their multifamily tax exemption program for 12 years. And we felt like this was going to provide a meaningful source of affordable housing and, and hopefully move the needle on providing affordable housing in, in Port Orchard. And we wanted to add a caveat, however, that we only designate this on the map where there is transit access. If there's not transit access, it doesn't make sense to provide affordable housing in a place where people can't easily get around without owning a vehicle. And so we've made a map that shows transit routes. And currently the map is based on current transit stops, but I feel like kids have transit. It's flexible enough and they've been willing in the past to relocate transit stops if we have new development that makes sense for, for moving that. I think really this should be within either a quarter mile or a half mile of the transit line with the understanding that, that the project may have to, to put in a new bus stop where there presently isn't one. And I, John, if you, Councilmember Clausen, if you have any input on that, I'd love to hear it.
Well, the only input that I would give you is the distance from a transit line. And I mean, the Americans with Disabilities Act says that people that live three-quarters of a mile outside of the transit is eligible for special door-to-door type service. So if you live within three-quarters of a mile, even if you're disabled, the federal government figures you have the ability to get to a transit line. So I would say at a minimum, at least a half a mile, and I would feel comfortable with three-quarters of a mile.
So in terms of where we can grant multifamily tax exemption, the, the statute says that it has to be within an urban center, but it doesn't define what an urban center is. And so one of the, the criteria here is we are, we are going to use our centers designations in the comprehensive plan is the basis for determining what is and what is not an urban center. And so there are some properties currently that, that at the time we adopted this ordinance, they were not in a designated center. Or maybe they were, but the boundaries have since changed on that center. And so it's possible there's a few properties that will lose access to this tool. But I think overwhelmingly, we're going to be able to expand the deployment by establishing the criteria that this is, can be used along transit lines.
Nick, I have a question.
Yes.
It's regarding your maximum rent. Did you poll our current multifamily apartments to see what they're currently renting apartments for? I did that and I can't, I don't have it at my fingertips.
Yeah, we did that and you prompted that conversation, I think, over a year ago. And we did do some research on that and we've had to do an annual report because we now have the overlook apartments off of Horseman, I think it's off of Horseman. And they qualified for 12, the 12-year exemption. So I get a report from them annually that I file with the state and it shows what the, the rents are. And when you compare their affordable units to their standard units, there's very little difference. And, but that's now a year old. So if rents have changed since then, I'm not aware of that.
I remember when I went out and did a survey that some of the established multifamily units felt, anyway, they, their rents were about the same as overlook. So they were already, again, qualifying. I'm not sure that the numbers we have here, I think we're still going to be within what our multifamilies are charging now.
Even at the, the 40% for a studio apartment?
Let me double check. Let me, I can't do it right this minute, but I have that information, but it's a good year old. Let me double check that.
Okay. And we, we can follow up afterwards. And if we find that these numbers are still too high, we can, we can ratchet them down a little bit. Or too low, yeah, excuse me.
They're low. The market's higher than this now.
Okay. Too low.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting $1,400, $1,500 for a two-bedroom.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. So in terms of the type one tax exemption, is, is everyone comfortable with this general framework before we move on to type two and type three?
I am.
Okay. And the idea here is that the, currently the, the code has one map showing properties that are eligible. And there's two different types of crosshatching. I think under this new framework, we'll do three separate maps and say type one is available in the area shown on the type one map. Type two is available on the area, in the areas shown on the type two, et cetera. All right. So moving on to type two tax exemption. And this is a conversation that should be familiar for those of you who are here when we initially adopted this. The map that we currently adopted really aimed, really looked at properties that we felt like could use some assistance in redeveloping. Places like the South Kids App Mall. There's a number of, of properties along Bethel that we felt like were a little bit challenged in terms of the economics of making a project happen. And so this is really a targeted tool where we are willing to give an eight-year exemption with really no conditions attached other than that you build multifamily housing containing 10 units and that it be located within an urban center. And the other tool, the other measurement that we're inserting here is we think that there needs to be a two-to-one assessed, assessed building value to land value ratio or, or higher than that to show that this is really a redevelopment project as opposed to a vacant or abandoned house type situation. If you look on Sydney Road Southwest, near the Sydney-Sedgwick area, a few of those bigger properties have old farmhouses that are now abandoned and boarded up. And the building value there, while it, while it is redevelopment, the building really has no value. It's 100% land value. And so we don't want to just give away an incentive where there's not actually a bar that, a hurdle to clear in terms of tearing down an economically viable structure. And so this ratio could, could be higher or lower. And the language that we used here under the type two redevelopment also says if it's an abandoned building, if it's an underutilized building, there, there's a few different ways that you can choose to target this, but this would really limit those requests from coming in saying, can I please have eight-year, eight years of a tax exemption and so that I can develop this property? It really does have to be redevelopment to use this sort of no strings attached, attached eight-year tax exemption. So I would envision this map to be very targeted. And if we move forward in this framework, Carrie and I would sit down and we would try to identify the properties, number one, that, that hit this value, building value to land value ratio. But also just looking around our city, if we see properties that we say that place is an eyesore or, you know, there's a lot of potential there, we may want to look at it, including it as a very targeted use of the tool. So that one, I think type two is pretty straightforward. Did you have any questions about that? All right. Moving on to type three. This is really a situation where you have a vacant piece of property or, or one of those properties with an old farmhouse on it that doesn't have much value. We don't want to just give somebody a tax break to build housing. I think what we want to seek in that situation is a win-win for the city and the developer. If we can give them a discount on their cost of development and operating an apartment building for the first eight years, what the city should ask for in return is a more valuable project so that over time, we come out ahead in the long run. So the framework that we've established here that we would propose to put into the type three section of code would be again, number one, it has to be in a center. It's an eight-year tax exemption and you've got it, you've got to provide structured parking, either underbuilding or in-building parking, which is a, a much higher cost to develop. And as a result, you're, you're leaving additional land for additional buildings. And so the hope is that by putting the parking within a building rather than on a surface parking lot, we're going to get, you know, 50% more assessed value when the taxes start being paid compared to what is currently viable where, where developers are just building garden apartments with surface parking. So that's one of the ways that you can qualify for this. The other thing that we want to do, because we've had very little success in getting anyone to build a mixed-use building where you have retail on the ground floor and multifamily above. And because a mixed-use building, they, they only get a tax exemption on the residential units, not the commercial units. So they would be paying tax immediately on the commercial units and they would be getting an eight-year exemption on the residential units. That would help subsidize the cost of that, that commercial space, which typically the, the, the commercial space is totally subsidized by multifamily rents in most projects of this sort, especially when you're in a more of a suburban community like Port Orchard. So that's, that's the second way that you can qualify for it. It also has a requirement that a certain percentage of the building footprint be, be commercial. Here we're indicating 40% is, is being that threshold. Finally, the third way to qualify would be to participate in the city's TDR program, the Transfer of Development Rights. And this would mean buying additional density and height through the county's framework, which would then be, they would actually have to construct that height. So they would be building a more dense, taller building than what would, what would otherwise be allowed in the city and would therefore be providing more long-term revenue to the city. And so in terms of where this would be on the map, this would apply to more greenfield type sites in centers. We could still be somewhat targeted or selective about how we apply it, but I think, you know, we're, we're finishing up the Ruby Creek neighborhood plan. And I think using this tool, especially in the areas where we want mixed-use buildings to be constructed, is appropriate. And we may want to use it more widely than that as well. At least one site out there already has a garden apartment proposed that has surface parking lots. And so that would not qualify for this incentive unless they bought TDR height bonuses or found a way to put parking inside the building footprint. So how does that approach sound overall to all of you?
Sounds good to me.
All right. So our next step on this then would be to work on the maps and bring those, I think we want to bring those maps back to the land use committee and then back to the council for review before we could hopefully adopt this maybe as early as July or August, depending on our, our meeting schedule. So any further questions before we move on?
So with that, we'll be moving on. I still don't see our consultants. So let's talk about the comp plan.
Do we know what phone number just checked in in the, in the meeting?
That's Ryan Hader.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm pretty sure it's Ryan.
All right. And I don't know, Mark, if you're there, I don't know if you can try to call TSI and make sure they haven't forgotten us?
I, I sent them a, I sent Janine's link and said we started at 6:30.
Okay. All right. Well, hopefully they will join us here soon. Moving on to the comprehensive plan. And Carrie's probably going to have to help explain some of this because this is a rather lengthy topic. We received several city-initiated amendments this year, including text and map amendments. And we also received one text amendment from a property owner within the city. The city-initiated amendments amend the land use element, the utilities element, the transportation element. We adopt a new transportation improvement program, both a six and 20-year tip. And then we update the list of plans adopted by reference to reflect the correct tip that's proposed for adoption. In terms of the land use amendments, we had a couple of outdated tables that still referred to our old development code. And we also, we had comp plan designations listed in a table within the land use element and it, it referred to residential high, residential medium, residential low. And it occurred to me that because we've moved away from a density-based development code and we adopted a form-based zoning code, that we needed to make some assumptions for how our zones are actually going to perform and what is a realistic expectation for those zones. And so you'll see, and I'm, I'm still scrolling through my packet here, looking for that table. We, for instance, for the R1 zone, I believe the number that we've assumed is it's still around eight units per acre. The range is actually from seven to nine because different building types can yield different results. But we wanted this table adopted as a matter of policy so that when we do the buildable lands analysis, we can fall back on this. And if the county wants to say that we have to assume the highest possible development in your study, we say, well, just because cottage housing produces a high density doesn't mean that this whole zone is going to develop as cottage housing. We want to have a realistic assumption for use in the table so that it doesn't either overstate or understate the amount of buildable land that we have in the city. So that's the, that's the, it's page 27 of your packet that, that has the old table and it has a revision to table one and a proposed, I'm sorry, the existing table one, which would go away, and then the proposed table one. The other thing that we're doing is we're actually linking the zones to the overarching comprehensive plan designation. So where it says medium density residential, there's actually four different zones that, that qualify as medium density residential. And each of those four zones has a range of densities based on the building types that are allowed. So any questions on that part of the proposed amendment? Okay, moving on. The utilities element, and I don't know whether the utilities committee talked about this tonight, but we're working on a capital facility charge study for both water and sewer. And is the, the basis of those are capital facility charges that are assessed on new development are the projects that are in our, our adopted plans. And we've realized that in, in our old plan that was adopted back in 2011 or 2012, the old, the old sewer plan, there were several projects that really didn't have an identified funding source. And what we've realized is that developers are willing to build those facilities, but because they're not part of our capital facility charge calculation, they're not able to seek a credit from the city for the cost of building that against their, their CFC that is owed to them. So by adding additional projects to this table, we're able to amend our CFC and then offer credits to anybody who goes and builds these, these projects for the city. This also cleans up the water table to reflect the agreements that have been made with McCormick Woods concerning how we're going to develop well 12, well 11, and the two reservoirs in the area. And Mark, I don't know if there's anything you want to chime in on this. It's, most of this information was furnished by Public Works and we're just making it official by putting it in the comprehensive plan. And they're, in parallel, they are amending our water system plan and sewer system plan. But by putting it in the comp plan now, it paves the way for us to adopt a new capital facility charge.
Yeah, I, I don't think I've got anything to add.
Okay. Next on the city, oh, go ahead.
Nick has a question.
I have a question. So when we're looking at these two charts, are, are some of these projects not included in our current rate structure?
Well, they aren't in our rates. They're in our capital facilities charge.
Okay, but when we calculated the rates, when Katie Isaacson did that work a few years ago, she based it off of what was in our capital facilities program at that time.
So there's two sides to that, that body of work. There's projects that are related to growth and projects that are related to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, related to development. And ones where, that are primarily being added to this list are related development, in particular on the sewer side. We will have some projects like well 13 was virtually 100% development in the last plan. We know that's not true. We're buying, we're, we're source deficient. And there's a component of that project being added into the rate side of it. But we don't have that body of work completed at this point.
Right. I think the question that Beck's asking, but not asking is at what point are we going to revisit rates? And we're not, we're not there yet. Right now, we're just getting all the steps in place with a realistic CIP list. Even that old CIP list had some miss, based on that 98 agreement, had some misrepresentation of developer versus city. And so now we have a, an updated list of water and sewer CIPs that actually have roll shares identified. And we're going to be looking at the CFCs now. And then at some point, we'll have to re-look at rates, but that's nothing that we have on our plan right now.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to know were there big items here that would really pump the rates up? That was my basic question. So thank you, Mark. You answered it.
On the water, on the water side, well 11, a funding source, that is going to be rates to bring that online. And then a portion of well 13 on the water side. On the sewer side, the Marina Pump Station is, is a rebuild that a, a good portion of that will be rates, but that's in our plan already.
Right. That was my question. What, what new is here that may be, so anyway?
Primarily well 11.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm, what I'm seeing here on this system, a water system capital improvement plan as well, 11 is by connection charge.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be.
Are you considering that rates?
Should be. It's replacing three existing wells.
11?
Yeah, it replaces the McCormick Well Field.
One, two, and three.
So it shouldn't say?
It, it should say connection fee and, or connection charge and rates. I think, I think in the Katie Isaacson work that's being done right now, we assume that that was 50/50 or maybe even 75% rates because it's, it's mostly replacement, but it is adding about 200 additional connections.
Yeah, there is.
On this list here then, it's not correct. It just says connection charges on the one I have.
Yeah, we'll, we'll double check that to make sure. I'll, I'll go through all of these with Jackie and make sure that they are correct.
Okay.
Bring this forward. There, there is also the table on stormwater, which as we talked about previously, we're putting the Bethel Avenue stormwater improvements in here to facilitate a whole number of projects. I don't think we would actually use that amount, but we didn't want to limit ourselves in the future and force ourselves to have to amend the plan again if we wanted to build out all of those stormwater facilities out of stormwater funds.
Talking about stormwater, and this is going back to the transportation element. When we're talking about a complete street on Old Clifton, are we talking stormwater out on Old Clifton also?
Yes, we are, but I don't, I believe that these would be replaced surfaces rather than new surfaces. And the sidewalks that would be constructed would not be pollution generating. Is that right, Mark? So it's, it's not, it's not as substantial because we're not really widening the road so much as we're adding pedestrian improvements and reconfiguring intersections.
Right. I would like to avoid collection and conveyance. So we have to look at how we do that with the, the existing ditch, ditch sections out there. If we can't, then we will have a storm component to that.
Yeah, if you wanted to add, if you wanted us to estimate storm and add it to this table, I think we could certainly do that prior to moving this forward. I mean, it is, it is a revenue source that could help make that, that project work.
Well, if it's on the list and we don't need it, that's not a problem. It's when we need it and it's not on the list that it becomes a challenge.
Sure. Well, Mark and I will talk with Chris and see what we can come up with on that. And we should talk, the plan right now is that the, the transportation component of this comp plan amendment, we still want to have further discussion with the transportation committee. So maybe as part of the transportation committee discussion, we can also talk about stormwater as it relates to transportation on some of these projects to make sure that everything we need on this list is on the list. All right. So the next amendment in the packet, we have a standard street classification map currently in the comp plan. And since that map was created, we actually updated our public work standards. And we now have different categories of arterial, minor arterial, and collector. And so in working with Public Works, we went through the city and we compared And so in working with Public Works, we went through the city and we compared the road section from our public work standard to the designation on this map. And so this gives, this gives more specificity to how our roads or the ultimate roadway design is supposed to be configured. And for instance, you'll see Bethel is now a purple line on the map. And that's because it is subject to the Bethel Sedgwick Corridor Study, which is adopted by reference into this plan. Sydney Avenue, our Sydney Road Southwest, the Sydney Sedgwick area, we've determined that's a minor arterial B, which differs from a minor arterial A because it has a center median in places with a turn, with intermittent turn lanes. And so that is, is different from the minor arterial A or C. And so we've just given more specificity to how we are planning our, our city streets Next on the list, we have an updated.
Nick, can I, can I interrupt you for one second and just sit here pondering what you said? And going back to the, the list of projects for the transportation impact fees, there are some of those projects that are not, are they listed as a minor arterial? I'm thinking of Pottery, for example, north of Tremont between and then you've got, what is it, Melcher between Pottery and Sherman, if I remember correctly and working from memory. You also have, now you've got Sydney, which is south of Tremont, which is also on that list, is also listed as a minor arterial. Does that, does that have any relationship?
It, it does. So anything that's on the map in gray is a local access street. And that's still a complete street with sidewalks, landscape strip, and travel lanes. So I, I don't think we've taken any streets that were previously arterials and changed their overall classification. We're just really being specific about what the road cross section is supposed to look like, which may be based on what is currently constructed, like on our new Tremont project. Or like you mentioned, Pottery near the middle school already has a center median. And so being a, a minor arterial B fits the existing section that's there for the most part. The sidewalks might be a little narrow and I don't think that there are landscape strips on the, along the sidewalks.
I just wasn't sure that, that the two need to, I guess you don't necessarily have to have a roadway designated in any category to be able to make a vermin to it, so that.
Correct.
I was just trying to see if there was a relationship between what we have on our list of projects compared to these street designations, so.
Only as it relates to cost estimates. So if it's a minor arterial, we've, we've planned that on a linear foot cost based on that road section.
Okay, all right.
And we're not proposing to change any of our federally classified road categories.
Correct, correct. So the, the next item in the comprehensive plan amendment is the adoption of the new six and 20 year transportation improvement program. And the projects and Chris Hammer, our assistant city engineer, is also in our meeting tonight. And so he may be able to add more to this conversation. And our intent is really to have a more full discussion of the tip at the transportation committee to make sure that that committee doesn't want to make any further adjustments to this prior to bringing it back to council. The main changes that we've made here is we've broken the Bethel Road project in, into five phases as part of the Sedgwick-Bethel Corridor Study. And then we applied for Tiger, is it Tiger grant funding, Mark, that we? You're muted.
Chris, Chris knows what, it's not Tiger.
It's the build program.
The build program. So we've applied for a federal grant and it, it generally follows phase one, but all of the phasing along the Bethel Corridor, we've kind of adjusted to fit our, both our transportation corridor study as well as our plan to, to seek grant funding. We've also separated out the design process on a few of these projects. And you'll notice a new project on the six-year, or two new projects on the, the six-year tip, we are now proposing to design the Old Clifton Road Corridor from Anderson Hill out to the new high school site, as well as designing the Sydney Road Southwest Corridor in addition to designing the Bethel Corridor. And so what we're realizing, and we just received a report today actually at KRCC that talked about how much funding every city has received over the last 11 years. And we really don't have the ability to apply for countywide transportation funds right now because we don't have any, any projects designed. And we're reluctant to create a ticking clock situation by designing and acquiring right of way without construction money. And so if we can do the design on the front end, we could apply to PSRC for right of way plus construction, is my understanding, right, Mark?
Yeah, it's the PE plus one, you only get basically two of the three phases.
Right, so, so we are, you know, based on our initial review of impact, our impact fee funds for both McCormick Woods and for the citywide impact fees combined with our projections for growth over the next two years, we believe that all three of those projects are feasible in the next biennial cycle. But obviously, we need to look at that more closely through budget and we'll have to look at kind of the timing of which project starts first and maybe one of them doesn't start until 2022. And that's obviously a discussion for, for the transportation committee and something they may change, they may have a different recommendation in terms of how we should proceed. But any input that, that anyone has on, on that issue, this is certainly a good place for that discussion.
Just on, on the 20-year piece, the priorities that start with two?
Yes.
I just, I can't say that I'm questioning, I'm just wanting to understand them. And I think I already had this conversation with you. But we've got 2.07, 2.08, both refer to Old Clifton road shoulder and pedestrian improvements. And then Old Clifton and McCormick Woods drive intersection. And then if we go to 2.20, 2.21, 2.23, we've got Old Clifton Road, Old Clifton and Figley, and just Old Clifton Road. I, I was just wanting to understand those various projects. Or can we put them in a form that we did Bethel and, you know, show the different phases?
And I, I know that Chris and I talked about clarifying this and I don't remember what our resolution is. Chris, is this something that you are able to, to speak to?
I, I thought we did change some of the descriptions a little bit. Either the, you know, the road name and the terminology or the actual language in the paragraph below to try to clarify that. But maybe we do need to have some more discussion about that.
Yeah, I, I don't see a distinction on some of them when I read the descriptions. So, and we could maybe talk about it at the transportation committee.
Yeah, well.
That's probably best.
Yeah.
And I will say that part of the confusion is that the, the terms in the McCormick Transportation Agreement are different than the terms in our trap, our, our tip in our comprehensive plan. Because when the transportation agreement was written, it was about widening Old Clifton Road for NASCAR, not about just making it a complete street. And so we've sort of reinterpreted widening to mean putting in shoulders and sidewalks and landscaping and making it a complete, a complete street. So I think part of that will get cleaned up with the continued negotiations on the McCormick Development Agreement. All right. Carrie, would you mind talking about the map amendments that the city initiated while I catch my breath?
Sure. The city map amendments are, as you can see in your packet, they are a list of a number of parcels that when we updated our zoning classifications in 2017, we went through all of the properties in the city trying to make our zoning map and classifications consistent with our comprehensive plan's land use map. And those classifications, we tried to make sure that all of the parcels jibed in terms of their equivalent map designations. We missed a few of them. There's about 15, 18 of those here. And we wanted to take this opportunity when we did our annual comp plan amendment to kind of do a housekeeping process and bring those both, bring, bring all of those into compliance so that we have both our comp plan map designations and our zoning map designations consistent. And most of these were public properties or churches. There's a few others scattered in here, but most of them were simply, we didn't know that, you know, churches have had, some of them had undeveloped properties. They should actually be considered to be zoned church. And that, that would also be designated the same way in the comprehensive plan. Parks, things like the waterfront park properties, some of those were still designated commercial, things like that on the comp plans. We wanted to make sure that we had consistency between both of our maps, the zoning map and our comprehensive plan. So I'm, I'm happy to go through the list or the maps and go over any details that you may have questions on.
Carrie, what specifically, what page is this on? So I don't have to scroll, scroll.
I don't have the packet.
It's page.
They're on 41.
41, thank you.
Yeah, 41, I, and the third page.
Yeah, 44 starts the maps.
Okay, thank you.
Jake?
Yeah, Carrie, I know we've been getting some of these updates over time. Is this just finally catching them up to the comp plan? Or is this a, for lack of better words, the new set of, of items that we're looking at?
It's the other way around. It's our comp plan finally catching up to our zoning. We, a few years ago, we changed all of our zoning classifications. We adopted a number of new ones. Yeah, and we tried to go through at that time and make sure that we had consistency with the underlying comp plan designation of those properties at that time. We just didn't catch all of them. And so we have kind of a, an opportunity at this point to just pick those up and make sure we now do have consistency for both sets of maps for all of the city's properties.
So, I think we looked at this two or three months ago, didn't we?
We looked at them at land use.
Well, and, and we did this once where we cleaned up the zoning map. Because you can only amend the comp plan once a year, we had to wait for the comp plan cycle to start. And so this is cleaning up the comp plan map. We cleaned up the zoning map a few months ago.
Right, and they're not necessarily the same properties.
Right, but Carrie, you're correct. I mean, this, this is kind of a catch-up to the comp plan because we've been looking at it over time. So thank you for that clarification.
And at least one property owner did reach out to us because we had included some church property that they actually thought they may want to develop someday. And so we did pull that out of the, or we, we redesignated that, or we left that designation alone rather than changing it as we had proposed. So I think that was our only comment that we received.
That's correct.
Christian Life Center?
Any other questions about the zoning maps? Yes?
Nick, I'm just wondering, you know, I might have missed it, but the commercial designation on Ada and Sydney that was catching up, are there already plans in place for that? There were a number of parcels that were converting.
Do you know which map number that was? I'm looking for it right now.
Um, number 14. Kitsap County General Store, it says, and then Christine Stansbury, and then the Shabazz properties.
Those three, I believe, are owned by Kitsap County. Isn't that an, that is a, they've got some sort of social services out of that building, I believe?
Yes, yes.
So the proposal here, Carrie, if I'm not mistaken, is to make that civic and institutional or public facilities, is that right?
No, the, they are all zoned neighborhood mixed use. And so we are trying to bring their underlying comp plan designation into compliance by zoning them commercial, which, which is in accordance with that zoning. Right now, they're all zoned medium density residential, which is not commercial.
Right, and those, those were originally constructed as commercial buildings and so they are sort of non-conforming with our existing comp plan designation.
One of them's, a couple of its county parcels, one's the Sexual Cell Center and the next to it is Church. And then the next one is Kathy Short.
Then Christine Stansbury's property, but also, and that's all commercial into a neighborhood area? I'm just curious. And maybe I'm just catching up with this, I don't know.
We talked about it being commercial, but not gas station commercial.
Correct. That zone that's in place there is really restricted. It, it basically allows for, what is it, is shop front houses, Carrie, is that the type of?
Shop front houses. I think there are some limited home business uses you can have, but it's extremely restricted. It's the most restrictive commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Basically a law, this could be in there.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
I will take a closer look at that one, just to double check everything.
Would that be more business professional, you guys, rather than commercial?
Well, business professional actually allows a lot more intensity than the residential mix or the commercial, what, what's the zoning, Carrie? Residential mixed use?
For which one?
For the, the Ada Street property, the.
Neighborhood mixed use.
Yeah, so neighborhood mixed use is the most limited of all the commercial zones. Business professional allows a much more intense development.
Okay, thank you.
And some residential as well, but yeah.
Right. All right, the, the final amendment that is part of your package, this actually came from Lars Queensland and concerns his property down near Bravo Terrace and Sedgwick. And he wanted us to amend our center boundary for the, the Sedgwick-Bethel Center because the boundary currently split his parcels halfway down the middle. And he does intend to try to seek a multifamily tax exemption for developing that site, which actually is going to be more difficult under the criteria that we're proposing unless he's able to create a connection so that transit can go through that site as opposed to being further away from it. The, but the, the amendment would basically take all of his property into the center as opposed to only half of it and would, would pave the way for that designation if we include it in our multifamily tax exemption chapter. So, and quite honestly, when we initially drew that line through the property, the goal was to try to keep it only to the parcels that were closest to Sedgwick, thinking that transit would be closer along Sedgwick. But now they're looking at actually putting a road from Bravo Terrace through that site connecting to Bethel. And so if that road went in, it would actually create an opportunity for a loop for the transit service. And whether Kitsap Transit would actually amend their route or not, I don't know. But if they were to amend their route, it would make them eligible for multifamily tax exemption and actually incentivize construction of a through road as opposed to more of a gated type apartment complex. So I'm supportive of it. I also didn't, I didn't think about how the assessor would handle that if half the buildings on a parcel were eligible for a tax exemption and half weren't. You know, I, I think that would probably give the assessor fits in trying to figure out how to apply that tax exemption. So those amendments, that's, that wraps up the presentation of the comp plan amendments. We don't plan to bring this to you next meeting, but potentially in July, depending on how things go at the transportation committee. But because we had space on the agenda, we wanted to walk you through this and let you ask questions and just see if there were any concerns or changes that you wanted to seek, so.
Just a question too about the glimora. What, what do this, what does that type of development look like? The garden cottage?
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be real similar to what you see that Rush developed at the Sydney-Sedgwick area. It's mostly surface parking lots, three, three, you know, walk-in apartments. And, and so this is a perfect example of, of why we should look at targeting our multifamily tax exemption to try to get either, if they did in-building parking or under-building parking, we could potentially get twice the assessed value per acre compared to what they're proposing now with surface parking. Or we could incentivize them to, to actually dedicate right of way through their site to create a public road that would allow transit to loop through from Bravo Terrace through the apartment and back to Bethel and Sedgwick and the Fred Meyer, where they, they currently turn around in the Fred Meyer parking lot, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, are we done with comp plan?
Yes.
Okay, so design standards.
All right. Just scrolling through many pages of comp plan. All right, here we go. So in probably December, we were approached by McCormick Communities and Quadrant because Quadrant was looking at buying the. because Quadrant was looking at buying the McCormick North subdivision. The first eighty-four lots out there are currently being cleared and they have permits and are putting in roads and infrastructure. The, they pointed out a handful of design standards that we had adopted that they felt like didn't make sense. And I think for the most part, staff agreed with the changes that they had proposed, with the exception of one. We took the amendments to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission recommended approval of everything except for two of the amendments. So the one that, that staff was not recommending, the Planning Commission also did not recommend. But they also declined to advance another, one of the requests that came in. And so in your packet tonight, there's actually two alternatives. There's the Planning Commission recommendation and there is the, the staff alternative that, that shows that additional provision that we had recommended, but the Planning Commission did not. And so part of what we're seeking tonight is for the Planning Commission to direct us on which version should be brought forward for consideration.
Look, if you have City Council.
You mean council, not, yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
All right, so amendments that were proposed. I've, I've listed some bullets in the staff report here. And one of the things that was in the form-based code that we adopted and which makes sense in some locations, but not others, was how high the ground floor of a house, like the first floor of a house has to be above the adjacent street. And the, the code that we adopted came from a, a city that was very flat. And in, in a flat area where you want to have a porch that sits slightly up above the sidewalk, that's not a costly thing to do because you're only building, you know, two or three feet of, of foundation above grade and steps up to a, a front porch. And so that's, that's easy. In Port Orchard, where we have a lot of topography, that can be very difficult, especially when your lot is sloping away from a sidewalk. It means that you would have to build, essentially, you're forced into building a daylight basement essentially at, at a huge cost based on how much it is to pour concrete these days. And so they wanted some relief from the requirement that their houses be two feet above the adjacent grade. And so what we've proposed is that the, the currently the setback is a ten-foot setback in the zones at McCormick Woods. However, if you're within fifteen feet, you have to meet the two feet above grade standard. But if you're on one of these lots that slopes away, if you set back an extra five feet, where you're, it's less noticeable that you're, 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 you're not, there, there's, there's privacy concerns that are associated with having such a small setback. And so part of the reason to elevate your house is that your living room is above the sidewalk and people aren't staring into your windows. But if you set the house back a little bit further, it gives you that same level of, of privacy, is the thinking here. And it also reduces the cost of construction significantly. The second proposal, and I'm going to scroll to page. Carrie, do you know what page we're on for the, the entryway requirement?
I'm sorry, I don't have the packet.
Oh. All right, there it is, page seventy-eight. So one thing that our code currently requires, and on page seventy-eight, the first picture of a house is a house that does not have a garage. And it says the front porch must be fifty percent of the width of a house. That requirement makes excellent sense when you have a alley-loaded garage or a garage that is behind your house. But it doesn't make sense when you're, you have a front entry garage because on a, on a narrow lot, you're typically going to have twenty feet of garage and twenty feet of house, or maybe even a little bit less house. And so then it is not possible for fifty percent of your house to be covered with a front porch. So this requirement is saying that, that you deduct the width of the garage when making that fifty percent calculation. And, and so that's, that's one of the two parts of the, the code change that they requested is relief from the front porch requirement. The other part of it is that our code currently requires the front entry to face the primary street. And so they have house plans that actually, the front porch faces the street, but the drive, the door to the house is actually a side door that you walk onto the porch and you turn right or left into the, the main door of the house. That is currently not allowed in our code and they showed some examples of that as a construction type and the, and that was one that we were, I apologize, my dog is starting to squeak his toy. All right, so the Quadrant has a product, it's apparently very popular with customers. And, and part of the, the reason that putting a side door on, on the house is beneficial is we're trying to get away from what we used to call snub-nose garage houses, where the entire front of the house is a garage door. And you would actually walk past the entire depth of the garage before you got to the front door of the house. And so the code now requires that you actually have living space next to the garage door to make it a more attractive facade. But often that living space ends up being a kind of a small room or a den or, or some space that's not quite big enough to be a bedroom. And they're, what they're finding is that space becomes more usable when you have a side entry compared to having a front entry where you have to walk through that room as opposed to being able to come in behind that, that little front room of your house. So this, from a design standpoint and from an interior design standpoint, I think it makes a lot of sense. It's, it's not ideal, but it, you know, I think we have enough other design standards requiring glazing area and windows and other accents to make houses attractive that that this is, this is workable as a, as a recommendation. So any questions on those first two?
Was, was either one of these, the one that the Planning Commission did not, which one was, what Planning Commission did not care for?
We, we haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, never mind.
So those were the two primary access design standard issues. The next issue they pointed out, which I'm not even sure if this is going to, to come up, but they pointed out that most cities that allow cottage developments allow units above their garage cluster. And so when you do a cottage development, you'll put like six or ten cottages around a common open space. And then you have garages kind of tucked away in a corner. And at least in some of the examples I've visited, there's a prominent one in Redmond. And they actually allowed for a little apartment above the garage structure as a way to squeeze an extra unit onto the site. And so we didn't have a problem with amending our code to allow that as well. It required some tweaks to how tall cottages could be because you're actually doing a full two-story structure as opposed to a one and a half story structure. So not, I don't think that one's too controversial and frankly, we haven't had anybody coming and do to, we've had one person do a pre-application meeting for a cottage development, but nobody's actually gone forward to build one. So this may not ever come up. All right, the, the issue that the Planning Commission did not recommend is actually on page sixty-eight in the staff report. It's highlighted pretty clearly. So currently we have restrictions on how many side-by-side garage bays you can have that dependent on how wide your lot is. And that's again, we're trying to de-emphasize the garage as an architectural feature of the house. And currently, our code does not allow a three-car garage until you get to a seventy-four foot lot. And what we've, and of course McCormick, through their development agreement, at least for McCormick Woods, is, is already vested through that agreement to other standards. McCormick North was actually plotted much later and did not have the same sort of vesting agreement. And so they really would like to be able to put a three-car garage on a sixty-foot lot. And when we looked closely at what was being built in parcel C, parcel D, and parcel E at McCormick Woods, they are doing three-car garages on sixty-foot lots and, you know, it, it does feel crowded in there, but it's not, it's not horribly unattractive. And they're actually, the garage bays are a little bit narrower than what we had assumed when we came up with the seventy-four foot standard. We went back and looked at our architectural plans for a, a number of houses in McCormick Woods. And we're finding that the bays were, were only ten feet rather than twelve feet wide when you do a three-car garage. And so it actually takes six feet off of what we had assumed was needed to, which we led us to the seventy-four foot lot width. So, so they're basically asking just to be able to do a, a three-car garage on a slightly narrower lot. The Planning Commission said no to this one. We talked about compromising at sixty-six feet. I think the sixty-foot lot width makes sense and that's why I wanted to raise it with you to see if you wanted it included in a final ordinance for consideration. But I will leave that up to you for discussion. The other, the other item that they requested that neither staff nor the Planning Commission recommended is on page seventy of your packet. And they really wanted to be able to do two-car front-loaded garages on townhomes. And there's a photo that they provided as, as an example of what they wanted to do. And, you know, and I don't think the townhomes are, are horrible, but it is a whole lot of concrete that makes up the streetscape and not a lot of landscaping. And I, I think you just need a little bit more width on a, a, a unit. And really, if you're going to have front-load garages on townhomes, they really have to be the, the tandem configuration where they're one in front of the other, rather than side by side. But if council wanted to, to consider this, I mean, it has been requested and I, you know, I will do as, as you wish.
Catching on the, the first issue that, that with the three-car garage. The reason this, part of why this is so popular in the McCormick community, we have a golf course community. And we've designated that area, you know, that they can drive their, so golf carts are very popular. And so people want to park their two cars and their golf cart in the third bay. And so it's, it's a selling point in that community and they're very popular.
I would just warn you to make sure that you're not creating garages that aren't able to put a vehicle in. My wife has an apartment in Denver and we can't get her Pathfinder in it because she can't get out. So it, then it becomes a storage thing and then everybody starts parking out in the guest spots because they can't get their vehicle in the garage.
Get by a smaller car.
Or that a truck won't fit into it.
To back up for that, for the garage, is that for McCormick Woods or for McCormick North?
This would apply citywide. So even though McCormick Woods has special provisions in their development agreement that allow them to build to the county, the old county standards, this would apply to any new application that vests within the city.
Yeah, I, I, I only have an issue from it from an aesthetic standpoint. And, you know, narrowing it both ways, I, I can live with, I could live with it, but I, I really don't. I, I feel moving it down to sixty feet for three-car garages is tough. That's my.
And of course, the compromise we discussed was taking it to sixty-six feet, which is splitting the difference. So you don't have to go all the way to sixty if there's some discomfort with it. But if you'd like, I can actually pull up a house plan from McCormick Woods and you can kind of see how the house is configured and what the width of the living space is relative to the garage.
I'd like to see that if you could.
I would.
Okay, it'll take you a minute to find it. You guys can continue your discuss.
Okay.
Say that there are already homes in McCormick Woods using the sixty-foot.
I believe so.
Right, so it's, it's a standard that's already been established in at least one of our communities or one of our neighborhoods.
Do you know which neighborhood?
Well, McCormick Woods, I'm assuming it's the old McCormick Woods.
Not probably the first generation. Those were the big, much bigger lots.
Yeah, they were really big.
More raised enough. It's parcel D, parcel E, and parcel C.
There are new ones off of Andrews.
Okay.
The lots are very, very tight.
Yeah.
I, just as a public works input, we still deal with constant issues with parking because people can't park in their garage. Whether it's a corner down there, lowering loop, or, I mean, we're talking decades after these plots were done and approved, we're now dealing with.
Yeah, but Mark, those areas are completely different than McCormick where they have very strong CCNRs. With, we are, I don't think they have that. I, I don't live in McCormick, Jay. I mean, people, you can't store stuff in your driveway in McCormick Woods. You, you, the Homos Association will come, write you a letter and come talk to you about those types of things.
Okay, Mayor, I have a plan that I can share now if you, if you can enable sharing on your.
Sure. Walk me through that one.
I think if you go down to.
Share screen? Oh, you turned that over to you, right, Nick?
There we go, share screen, I got it.
All right, there you go.
Well, how do I turn it over to you?
I think there's a dropdown and it says allow all participants to share.
Yeah, not so much there.
But then just give it, give the meeting to Nick.
Well, there's that, there's that option maybe.
Yeah, I don't know what it looks like because I don't have the same options as you right now.
Manage participants.
Is, is there more options when you click the dot, dot, dot under more?
I don't see the dot, dot, dot more.
On mine, it's at the bottom.
Oh, you're on your screen, there we go. I'm going to make you the host.
I'm honored.
Maybe let's see if I can find a better option, but I don't see one, so I'm going to give that to you.
I think that's what you have to do.
I am now the host. All right. So I am now sharing, this is a house plan. I believe this was Main View Homes. And you can see there, they've got the three-car garage and it looks like the third bay is about ten feet. And the other two bays, I can't quite, quite read because the plans are a little too small. But it's about a thirty-foot garage. You have a six-foot front entry hallway plus a den on the house. And the entire width of this house looks like it is forty-four foot six. So on a sixty-foot lot, that gives you more than the, the minimum side yard setback, which is a five-foot side yard setback. It gives you seven or eight feet. And, and you still have a, a full front porch across the front of the house. And a, a main front entry with windows. I don't know if there's, there's the elevation of the house.
So Nick, to not, to Mark's concern, and, and we've, in our past, allowed development where they didn't have an approach to the driveway, they didn't, there was no street parking. So those, those types of development though have been, we don't allow those. I mean, you've got to have an approach on your driveway. You have to have street parking on our, our streets. We don't, you know, those, those are sins of our past that aren't allowed any longer, I believe.
Correct, and there is a minimum of, it's either eighteen or twenty feet in front of a garage door bay between the back of the sidewalk. So you, you're, when you do a three-car garage, you're actually getting an extra outdoor parking space plus an extra indoor parking space. So I'm going to stop sharing that unless anyone wants to look at it further.
And while Nick's doing that, I wanted to let you know that Andrew has joined us. So if we could go to the tip before we go to item five, that would be great.
I'm sure, I think Nick's just about done with the design standards, aren't you? We just need some direction on what, whether, whether we need a compromise or we're not interested or we are interested, I guess. Jay, Jay is on the fence and, and I haven't really heard from, from others if, which direction, what you, what you would like to see coming forward from the count, from staff.
I, I would just add to that the other consideration here is financial. And the house with a three-car garage is going to have a higher assessed value on the same size lot potentially based on the, the previously approved densities for some of these subdivisions. And so there is, there is a financial benefit to allowing someone to build more square footage as part of their, their house and garages. They're not taxed at the same rate as habitable space, but they are, they are taxed.
I, I support the sixty-foot or the three-car garage.
After having seen the drawings, I, I can support that as well.
Red or Cindy, do you have?
I would support it, although it's not something that I would want personally. I don't see why it couldn't be offered. And it, and as Beck said before, it sounds like something that is already existing in certain places.
Do you have a thought you want to share, Cindy? Yay or nay or compromising? Do you have a thought you want to share Cindy? Yay or nay or compromising between or?
I would like to go out and take a look. I mean, I, I, the plan looks fine enough, but I'd like to see what it actually looks like. And I might just drive out there and take a look. Do you need to know this minute?
Um, we need to know before we print the next packet in terms of which version to include. So you can, you can let us know offline what your preference is and we'll, it sounds like it'll, we don't have Sean's opinion, obviously, Councilmember Cuchardi, but.
They'll be watching the video. And so Cindy, if you want to go for a drive, make a left on St. Andrews. Uh, it's that first subdivision that was built. It's a right hand turn that goes down. You go in there, you go left and you'll make another left and then it's a right. It's that first subdivision that was built.
Rob, do you know what it's actually called, the subdivision?
Elden Trails.
Elden Trails.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
All right. Just for, just for reference, I can live with it, but can I, can I tongue in cheek say that people would have to be required to park their cars in garages?
There's always a compromise of the sixty six foot too.
Garages are made for cars to park in instead of the storage.
Yes. All right. So we're not quite sure yet. We're going to let some council members go for a drive out there and we'll let Scott and Sean watch the video and provide some input to, to Nick and I before we bring this to you back to the counter.
Yeah. And the, the plan would be to bring it next week, but if we need to wait an extra two weeks, that's not a problem too.
Okay. So we, we have Andrew here with us now from T, I think from TSI. And so we'll circle back to item number one, our traffic impact fee study and I'll update an analysis.
All right. I'll, I'll walk you through this again and then hand it over to Andrew. At our May work study, we brought forward a, a spreadsheet that included three alternatives. It was a red, yellow and green alternative with corresponding increases in the impact fee amount. And some of the council members had questions about the methodology and the math that was used to calculate the impact fee. And so Andrew Breitlin with TSI agreed to attend tonight and he is here to answer questions for you.
Hey, guys. Sorry I was late. There was a little miscommunication with the meeting invite, so I'm happy to be here and happy to answer questions. I have the spreadsheet open in front of me and, you know, I can answer, or at least try to answer whatever questions you may have. If I have to get back to you, I'll let you know on that too.
And I guess to add more of what Nick was saying, Andrew is, there was, I guess they say that on the radio, they call it on air math. There was a lot of looking at the spreadsheet and, and yeah. You know, I was making assumptions and maybe what the spreadsheet was for, because they didn't seem to add up logically as opposed to maybe there are cells that went in and then grabbed other data that had to do with the model. So I think a lot of the questions had to do with, you know, how do you get from the table in certain summarized columns? Then, you know, down into the actual total project cost or percentages of shares.
Okay. Is there, I mean, I can answer generally or specifically. I mean, are there specific questions about certain cells or?
You know, I think actually Councilmember Cuchardi had the majority of the questions last time, but it might be helpful to just take one of the projects like the, the Tremont project, for instance, and walk us through how you go from cost estimate to local share to growth share to growth share dollar amount. And then once you get to the bottom of the table, how that total project cost translates to an impact fee.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I can do that. And then, so just so I'm clear on the material that everybody has in front of them, are these the three worksheets? There was a red, yellow and green worksheet with however many projects on them.
This is the PDF version that you emailed me last week. And they are not color coded, but it's the same, the same dollar amounts as what was in the spreadsheet.
And, and I'll note also that if it's helpful for anybody, and I'll leave this up to Nick and Mark and Chris. If it's helpful to share the workbook that is the basis for these calculations, you can share that too. I don't mind. It's not proprietary or anything.
Well, I, I gave control of the meeting back to the mayor accidentally, not realizing I would need it again. But I could certainly pull that up as we walk through it.
Sure. And I have it here too.
Make you the host again, Nick.
All right.
Since it's your show tonight.
One second and I will have it up. Okay. So this is the spreadsheet. And it corresponds to the, the PDF that was in your packet.
Right.
So let me try this again. Can you see it? Can everybody see it now?
No, Kim.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
Let's start with the, the red alternative is the highest dollar amount traffic impact fee. And so Andrew, if you want to walk us through project one point one, which we're all very familiar with.
Absolutely.
Instructed.
Okay. So great. So this is the Tremont construction phase. The first column, let's say column D, the cost estimate. That's the most recent cost estimate. I think that was provided by Nick. That includes everything that has been accounted for to date, as I understand. Nick, you can jump in at any time and correct.
Yeah, that's the most recent information from the finance department about what this project has actually cost the city.
Right.
Total, total project cost.
Right. Column E, the local share in general. So conceptually, what that means is the, the portion of these projects that are not being paid by grants. Local share means the city and development share together. And so for many of these projects, that was defined by collaboration with Nick and Chris discussions that they. Got an echo here now. Am I echoing? Okay. But it was discussions they had about what the assumed grant share should be. And so the local share would be what's not covered by grants.
So Andrew, I've got a question out of the gate. So right now we're looking at project, you call them we, we create from six, and I see where it says V lookup.
Yep.
In that equation, what does that link to?
Yep. So that links back to, I don't have control of the screen, but there's a sheet called tip. So this is like the master calculation sheet. You can trace all the references through this sheet, you know, if you really want to get into the details, but that's essentially calling for column. If you go to the left, Nick. It's calling the value in column H. So the raw cost. Some of these were adjusted because the cost estimates were dated to 2015, I believe. And so some of these were adjusted based on the, I believe, the highway construction cost index. You'll find that value to the right in cells in column A B.
And these are also tied to where you have the volumes. Is that tied to the model?
Yes. So anywhere you see traffic volumes in there, that's tied to travel demand model. I should be more specific, twenty nineteen PM volumes. So column P, those are based on traffic counts. And then columns Q and R are based on the travel demand model. As we get into capacity, so columns S, T, U and V. Those are based on your capacity policy, which is in turn based on highway capacity manual. That's kind of the traffic engineer's bible, so to speak.
So then the question is, is as you go back to that original sheet, you see that equation that's taking all that into account.
Correct. That's correct. The goal of using that V lookup reference was that anytime we're changing a value, we want to just do it once in that TIP worksheet. And that carries through to all three of these other scenario sheets. So if, for example, you want to go in and edit these, you can edit those values in these summary sheets. You know, it's fine to do that. I would highly recommend rather editing the TIP worksheet.
Right.
So you don't break cell references.
I can't remember what Sean's specific question was, but there was something in the math that you would think that it was linear where that times that or that plus that equal that, and it didn't. And I think.
It's quite possible. Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
Well, when, what I, what I was hearing Sean say is when you look at the total cost estimate and then you break out the local share. And then I think he was getting confused at the growth share is fifty five percent of the local share.
Oh, yes. So this.
And.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The local share was forty seven percent of the total cost, meaning that we were going to get, we were estimating we were going to get fifty three percent of our funding through grants. And I think, I think Sean was getting hung up with that fifty five percent that was sitting there.
Sure. Oh, the fifty five percent in that growth share column at the, so thirty four. Yeah. So that brings up a good point, which is good and important to understand for these worksheets, which is we're kind of taking a share of a share by the time we get to columns F and G. And so column E is, is whatever is not covered by grants. And then columns F and G relate to the share of that part, which is being sort of consumed by new trips or by growth. And so for some, that's a hundred percent, which that indicates that new trips will be consuming all of the new capacity that's provided by that project. It's, it doesn't reference to surplus or deficient capacities in the existing condition. That's maybe a little technical detail of the methodology, but so essentially that growth share, that fifty five percent at the bottom, that's the weighted average of all of the, the new trip portion of the local share.
And we were being just estimating that we would get forty seven percent in grant funding or actually fifty three percent in grant funding.
Right. Yeah, that's an assumption.
Yeah. Okay.
So that could be more or less, and depending on how you turn that dial, that will scale the impact fee rate up or down.
Right.
Yeah.
So at, at the last meeting, our discussion was intended to really be, are we going to focus on the red, yellow or green alternative? As we continue our negotiations with McCormick communities. And I think we heard that the preference was for the red alternative. And I think the number, the impact fee, the peak PM trip number has changed and so it's slightly higher than it was before. So I just want to verify that, that the red alternative is still the preference. Or if it's not the preference, if there's a specific project or two that you would want to remove to try to lower that, that amount. And once we have that council direction, we can move forward with finalizing Andrew's report and with finalizing our agreement with McCormick communities to bring that forward for consideration.
Okay. So in the red, we see forty nine fifty two. What is the yellow number now?
Forty three thirty three.
Okay. And what are the differences in those, in projects between those two?
Can I just interject? Mayor, most of the difference between those two are our neighborhood projects. The.
Fireweed?
Well, right. It's fireweed. It's Sherman. It's Melcher. It's some stuff on Tremont. It's Berry Lake. It's, it's, it's our neighborhood projects. It's not Old Clifton. It's not Bethel. It's not Sedgwick. And I personally have a hard time removing our neighborhood projects.
Right. It's, it's the difference between the tier one and the tier two.
Yeah.
Because we know that the tier one or the reasonably constrained and the tier two are the unconstrained. So the, the tier two are the projects further out and we haven't really started anything with those. We don't have any funding set aside. So that's why you see the higher number with all projects because you're bringing in more of the tier two projects.
So I'm hearing Beck say stick with the, because it's the neighborhood streets, stick with the, the red. Cindy?
Yeah. What is the county rate? What does the county tip?
Oh, eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that. I was so sneaking. Originally, we were supposed to have been in twenty fifteen at around four thousand, but we dropped projects to bring it lower because of the post recession issues. So.
Where are we right now, Nick? It's thirty five?
Twenty five fifty two.
Yeah, quite low.
We're doubling it. And then this still puts us where in our, in the list of cities that have impact fees? That's relevant too, I think.
You know, I provided that list at the last work study meeting. I don't think I included it in this packet, but we're pretty middle of the pack. I mean, we're, we're in line with, I think actually Shelton was close to us and we're right in line with Pauls Bow.
And Pauls Bow is increasing theirs currently also.
Right. The county, the county is actually doing a study right now with TSI, if I'm not mistaken, right Andrew?
That's correct. Full disclosure, we're, we're working with the county right now on creating a similar travel demand model, which actually incorporates your travel demand model, the goal being that it'll be consistent with your, your model.
Yes. Good currency. Cool. I actually favor the higher one with the neighborhood projects. Some of those have gone so long, we really need to deal with that.
And that's consistent with the pavement management system as well.
Right. The other thing that I would point out is we're, we kind of focus on that traffic impact fee because that's what the developers or the people building the homes needs to pay. But I quite honestly go down to the bottom line where it's the annual funding commitment.
Right.
Because that's what the city is going to have to pay annually over twenty years. And so it's roughly a million and a half dollars a year. And if you look at, that's the red. And if you look at the yellow, it's a million two. So regardless, and when you add our pavement management system in there, those are big dollars and, and those are the numbers that the city really is going to have to figure out how to obtain. You know, how are we going to get that revenue? Because we're already assuming that we're going to get grants for more than half of the dollars. So anyway, I, I don't see a great difference between a million and a half and a million two a year to figure out how to come up with it. So.
Thank you, Beck, for bringing that up because I'm of the same mind. We're going to be collecting almost five thousand dollars per trip from whatever improvements developers, that pretty much, we're making a commitment that we're going to move forward with these projects. And yet, how in the world are we going to come up with a million and a half, excuse me, a million and a half a year to devote just to these projects, let alone, as you mentioned, our pavement management system that we can't keep up with now. So I don't want to be Debbie Downer, but I'm just concerned that we're taking a, an impact fee with the assumption that we're going to collect all this money from these folks and then we're going to be able to move forward with these improvements when we can't come up with our share of it.
Well, you've also got the debt service on Tremont that we're still paying.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I, I don't have a heartburn between the calculation of, of this impact fee between, you know, the going with the one point four. I mean, that's fine. We need to get all of our projects in there. But I'm going back down like back to the bottom line, trying to figure out how in the world. I'm going back down like back to the bottom line, trying to figure out how in the world. Are we making this promise that we're going to do this, and how are we going to fulfill that promise?
And we don't have to pay all of that, a lot of these. We won't do for ten or fifteen years, okay? But we are collecting the money, and so we do have a commitment that we are going to. Eventually do these projects, and it's just how are we going to come up with the money to do it?
That's that's, you know. Part of the concern is, we don't have to do these next year or the next two years, but somewhere along the line. In fifteen years, we have to come up with whatever fifteen years of the twenty nine or thirty million dollars. That we're obligating ourselves to come up with, and hopefully.
Those are valid concerns, I will say, though. You know, five, six years ago. We, well, two even two years ago, we didn't have a. The program to replace our vehicle replacement program, that that capital program, we fully funded that. So that liability is off off the table, we've got an ongoing commitment to that. We've funded our, and we're going to amend these financial policies because I think we still need to do more. Reserves, so we we've taken some significant. Funded some significant things that I think now need to go into. Our our street and other capital projects that, and they're just going to need to, and obviously, we need to get. These these arterial streets built, and we need, I I mean, we've been saying it for years, we need to put. Some money into our residential streets, there's no doubt about it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to hold you to that when we get the budget for the next biennium, so.
Okay. It may not be one point four million this year, but we we need to make a significant contribution to streets, there's no doubt about it.
Well, and don't forget that we have the pavement management, you know, the streets that we have today, we need to be paving, so.
I hear you.
I mean, I got some rose colored glasses on, and I generally always do, but I just, I want to make sure that the rest of the council. Is aware of this commitment that we're we're making. By adopting this and imposing these transportation impact fees.
And every three to five years, we should be updating this and and changing this number, so it's not to say that. This number can't go up or down to three to five years from now, if it becomes unmanageable.
As long as we visit it every three to five years and make those adjustments and can afford to make the adjustments, so I'm all for it.
The other point I'm going to make is. This is an issue. That I would like to bring up at K R C C's Transportation Policy Board. Because we are not the only jurisdiction. That's in this situation, we all have significant transportation needs. And. There just isn't necessarily funding for us to, or there's not revenue for us to actually meet the needs. Of our growing communities, so it's a conversation I think we can also have on a regional basis on revenue.
Great.
I appreciate. I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but thinking that we're gonna. Get what fifty three percent of this funded through grants? That's that's pie in the sky.
Okay, Debbie.
So we amend this to have two projects?
I I I think this is where we need to be, and and if we need to amend it in three years, because. We're not, you know, we stepped out of the funding cycle, we're not, you know, Nick's advocating and and he's right. That in this next budget, we need to fund Sydney South as a design, we need to. You know, get the design done for for Old Clifton, and we need to get design work done on Bethel, so we're competitive for grants. And Chris, Chris has done a fabulous job getting to build grants in there, even if we don't get them this go round, we've, you know. We might get them in a in a future round, so we're competing places we never have before. Everybody said we couldn't do Tremont, and by God, we did it. And I'll put the group of people we have up against anybody. We 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 know how to get stiff stuff done, and I know this is a a heavy lift. And maybe we can't get it all done, but we're we're going to do our best. To get as much of it as done as we can, and three years from now, or five years from now, hopefully three years from now. We're looking at this again and reevaluate and and reevaluating what we've got done and what we haven't, and what we've got for grants.
Question, Mr. Mayor, or I guess to Mark, Nick, are any of these improvements that are on this list? Do we have anything in in the design? Are any of these shovel ready?
No, that's why we've got to get projects designed this next budget cycle.
One point four Anderson Hill Roundabout is.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. One point.
We have one project.
It's actually shovel ready.
Yeah, and we're going to put compete this fall at T I B again for that.
Yeah, and then we're also working internally on the drainage for the South Sydney. You know, trying to address that, and we're going to be pursuing grants, stormwater grants for that.
Well, I only ask the question that. In the remote chance. That the feds develop some kind of an infrastructure program. As an economic stimulus. I would hope that we have something ready that we could at least submit, I don't know how well it will compete. But I'd like to at least be able to be in the in the requests.
I think that was the purpose of the build grant that Chris prepared was that if there was going to be a stimulus package, they may. Add funding to that existing program to fund the applications that had come in, and so that was part of the reason for putting in that Bethel Phase One. Grant application was the hope that something like that would occur. So we're already on a list if they choose to use that list as opposed to doing a new call for projects, is that, Chris, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I'll I'll jump in, and so we do have Anderson Clifton that's ready to go. But even at our thirty percent for the Bethel corridor. That's better than a stick in the eye, I mean, we have the ability to say that we do have a phased. We have a concept, and you know, Bremerton got eight million dollars to redo the Gorse Utilities. With nothing more than a conceptual, so. We do have at least that one, we have Anderson, and then I think we have the Bethel Corridor at a thirty percent. That would get get us some scoring points.
Good.
I I also wanted to announce while we're on the subject. That Bremerton issued a CIPA decision a few days ago for the Sinclair Ridge project that includes. Further three hundred or so lots, I think we're getting about eighteen hundred dollars per lot towards the Old Clifton Corridor and Campus Parkway. Improvements, and so that's if that project gets approved at the Hearing Examiner, that is another source of funding that. We are actively seeking when we have the opportunities for projects outside of our jurisdiction.
So Cindy, I think I heard red for Cindy, John is a skeptic red. Beck was red. By God, you better figure out how to manage a bake sale, and Jay and Fred?
Red.
I'm I'm red, I just feel that we need to list all the projects and move them forward. We keep being selective, we'll never get things on the docket, and. I do appreciate John's passion for holding the mayor and others accountable for continuing to review this, so. That's much appreciated, same with Beck's comments, so I'm red and let's go.
Okay. And then I'll make sure Scott and Jay, or Scott and Sean watch the video and give it their input also, but it sounds like we're going red.
All right, thank you, Andrew, for for being here.
Thanks, everybody, and again, if there are any questions, just feel free to email me, Nick can give you my info, so thanks.
Good night.
Bye bye.
I would prefer that we change the color scheme, I think this is green and it's a go.
Yep. Yeah, maybe red was bad, green should have been the highest. Thanks, everybody, bye bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
I'm not going to stick around and talk about trees, so.
Okay, you can go away, we'll talk about you, you and Chris both. All right, we're down to significant trees, Mr. Bond.
So I'm just scrolling through my packet here. The significant tree issue has been something we've talked about for as long as I've worked for Port Orchard, and. It used to be when I got here that if somebody wanted to cut down a tree that was bigger than thirty six inches, they had to come ask for city council permission. And we changed that requirement a few years ago because that didn't seem like a good use of your time. And we we adopted a more. Rigid structure where it was administrative, and if you wanted to cut a significant tree, you had to replace it as at a specified ratio. And the. The problem with that, we encountered when we reviewed the Geiger subdivision, that. That site was one hundred percent forested in a predevelopment condition, and almost all of the trees were significant, and so. Replacing four hundred trees at a three to one ratio didn't leave any room for houses. And that was that was problematic. We, at the same time, when McCormick Woods was looking at developing parcel A. Greg Krabi, who works for McCormick Communities, pointed me to a Snohomish County code that he had worked with, and he said, well, he. Would prefer that there not be a code, he says he felt like that was a good one. And the approach was totally different from our approach, we we sought to protect significant trees and require require a replacement ratio. Basically penalizing people who cut them and incentivizing their preservation. However, I think most of us are aware that when you develop land and you leave some trees standing, there's a risk. That those trees are going to blow over onto new houses because they are, they used to be on the inside of a forest, and now they're on the windward edge of a forest. And so that's not always the best outcome. And what Greg pointed out to me was that, you know, if you're really looking to have a tree community going forward. You need to make sure that you have standards that require developers to plant a lot of trees within the development, so they grow up strong in the conditions. That that they will not blow down onto houses in the long run, and so he really wanted us to emphasize. Allowing for masquerading activities, but requiring that that we plan for a twenty year tree canopy, so that there will be a certain percentage of the site covered with trees. Long term, and so. I'm sure most of you. You know, I wasn't around when the neighborhood that I grew up in was developed, but. I think when it was developed, it was probably clear cut, and the trees that were there all grew up during the life. Span of those houses, and it became really nice, and it takes a period of time for that to be established, but. Given twenty or thirty years, the neighborhood becomes a really attractive place. So the the ordinance that we brought to the Planning Commission was a tree canopy ordinance that sought to totally replace our significant tree ordinance.
Nick, can I interject something here?
Yeah.
Here's another fatal flaw with what we have is so. The housing kits app development up on Sherman is an example where. What happens is, and and so is the, and I hate, I I like Doug Stroba, but Doug right now is logging. The property off of Glenwood. But if they log and then wait, what that allows them to do is not replace any trees. And so the the developer who's more responsible and doesn't clear cut their property. Five to seven years ahead of of when they intend to build gets penalized. And so what we end up with is like it's the Sherman Ridge site. They have to put very few trees with our code currently on the site because years ago, this thing got clear cut. But the developer who who doesn't clear cut their site many years in advance then gets penalized. For I for I think what is more responsible development, so I just want to give that that those relevant examples out there.
Sure, so so where we started at the Planning Commission is very different from where we ended up after about a year of review. And we, what we've realized is that our existing significant tree ordinance was really designed, and I'm going to pick on Council Member Ashby because. She did call me once about a tree near her house, and she was concerned that it was going to be cut down, and it was a significant old tree. And so you have old parts of the city where you have mature trees that people are very protective of and would like to to see protected. But then you have the realities of new development where you're developing entire neighborhoods. And it's very hard to regulate both of those situations under the same set of tools. But that is what we are trying to do based on what the Planning Commission has now recommended to you. And so we started with the Planning Commission with this tree canopy ordinance based on what Snohomish County adopted. And we ended up bringing a lot of our significant tree restrictions back and establishing a tree canopy ordinance. And. You know, we we mentioned that this was happening early on to the development community, we didn't get a lot of feedback one way or another. But I feel like where we've ended up is actually very different than the path that we charted a year ago. And so I mostly wanted to to. Get council's opinion on. The tree canopy concept versus the significant tree concept, and. Is developing a very sort of complex hybrid between the two codes desirable? Or is there a desire to sort of refocus this on either tree canopy or the existing significant tree statute, because. Frankly, when I sat down to write this staff report. I, you know, Carrie handled a lot of the the Planning Commission feedback, and we had planning commissioners writing us long. Redline documents of our ordinances telling us how we could improve them. And it got so complex that I tried to write a staff report, and I. I was trying to look at this from the perspective of the developer and saying, if I hand this to a developer. They are not going to be happy with how many hoops they have to jump through. In order to submit an application in Port Orchard, because not only do they have to go out and do. A tree survey of existing significant trees. They have to then design around as many significant trees as possible. Then they also have to come up with a landscape plan that shows a projected tree canopy twenty years into the future, based on what size those trees are going to become. And it is hugely expensive to to go through all of that effort. And I don't know that it's the the best use of 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 resources, I guess. So with that, without getting into the specifics of the Planning Commission recommendation, I wanted to have a higher level discussion of kind of these alternatives and see where each of you are at. In your thinking on trees. And quite frankly, if we move forward with with what the Planning Commission has recommended, I feel like we probably owe. A little bit more outreach to the development community, and I would want to take this draft to the K B A and try to get some additional feedback. It's it's just we we do not get people showing up to our Planning Commission hearings, and we had two hearings on this. And I think eleven meetings or ten meetings where we discussed it, and and there's just very little public input into the process.
I'm going to say the particular significant tree I'm concerned about, I will chain myself to it before it gets cut down.
Okay. And Nick, I think that'd be commendable, taking it to K B A. And being proactive, I think that that's a right move on something this significant.
Based on what I've seen where we've traveled, I think we're better to leave it alone or travel. What we got to is I think worse than what we have. You know, is that a misstatement, Nick?
I'm I'm not sure that it's it's worse. It's it's untested, and I I honestly, I look at it and I try to envision how. How it's going to work, and. I have no idea what sorts of obscure questions we're going to get when we get into a situation where. A developer has a very specific question about how to design something, or. I I don't know, I'm.
Sounds complex.
It it's it's definitely complex. But I don't know that you can combine significant tree protection. With a, what is essentially a landscaping requirement for new development to establish tree canopy.
I guess from my perspective, you have to define what's worse. When. My memory isn't the greatest, but what I remember that prompted this whole issue of significant trees. Was a combination of both aesthetics and environment. And there was a fair amount of discussion initially about the. Benefits to our environment that these large trees have. That when you take them down, that was. that these large trees have, that when you take them down, that was, you know, recognizing that. Now, having said that, I personally, I think we have to figure out how we're going to do both because I think you raised a good point, Nick, both in, we have to accommodate for growth. And when you're talking about a piece of ground that is forested, it's going to be very, very challenging for a developer to meet that significant tree ordinance as it is currently written. But on the other hand, you say that you, you've reached out to an ordinance at Snohomish, was it? And this is kind of a hybrid of Snohomish and what we have. And in reading all of the reports and the information on that in reference to how many meetings the planning commission has had on this and their discussions, I, I agree with Jay that I think we need to reach out to the development community. But I don't know that we can just throw the tree ordinance, significant tree ordinance in the trash and say that just by providing a canopy in the next twenty years is going to be adequate either. So I don't have a good answer, but I think we're going to have to see if we can come up with something that's going to work for both sides of this issue. See if we can reach some compromises.
So Nick, Nick's wife came home from work and so the dogs are going nuts. So I'm going to, I got John and Jay want a little more outreach. Beck's changed herself to a tree and we've got Fred and Cindy. What are your thoughts?
In Madison, I chained myself to a tree to save it. And actually I did, two-hundred-year-old oak. Just saying, significant trees are very important and, you know, we've got plenty of them around. I think that we have to have the complex thing that you were talking about, Nick. Is, I think it's so important to a community to value the trees. And you, you take down, I mean, it's so interesting because, you know, the new developments are called Hawks Landing and places like that, there's no trees left for a hawk to land on, excuse me. You know, and twenty years down the road is too long. You've got a whole cup, you know, a generation of kids growing up and no trees. We have to, we've got to really think this through and gather more information. And if it's complex, it's complex, but it's very important to me.
And I see kind of, like my neighborhood and Cindy, your neighborhood that are old established neighborhoods, I value our trees a little different than the trees of, you know, an entire new development. So I'm not sure how we marry all that together.
I agree. I agree.
If you're suggesting we start over or if we start by taking what's been brought forward to the, you know, the builders and, and, and seek their input before we, you know, continue.
But I, I agree with you, Rob, that we don't want to have a situation where somebody levels, clear-cuts all the trees and then waits a period of time and not have to replant. That's not cool. That doesn't work.
And, and I agree with Beck's statement there too. I think your, our older part of our, you know, downtown, our established neighborhood. I mean, it's not that I'm, I love the trees too. I probably own the largest parcel of large trees in our downtown in my backyard. So, and, and I love that. And, but on the other hand, as I spoke to earlier, we've got people kind of manipulating the system here and we've got to come, I think, to a better approach.
I agree. I agree.
Fred, do you have any input you want to provide?
Um, no, I would just say that I, I was really intrigued by the idea of the canopy because it seemed like a, a, an attractive substitute from at least, I guess, the fifty-thousand-foot view. But I think what Beck is suggesting might be a good idea where we have the existing neighborhoods versus the undeveloped. And maybe we have two different standards there, or I don't know if we do.
So Nick, that's a good question. Is this related really, this code to new development and subdivisions? Is that where it's, that's, that's where it's catered to, isn't it?
Right, right. That's, that's the, the tree canopy is really to developing undeveloped sites versus working within established neighborhoods. And, and maybe that's the approach that needs to be taken is to, to create a map of the established neighborhoods where we are protecting significant trees and then take areas that are undeveloped and/or redevelopable and, and focus on the tree canopy approach. I don't know if, if Charlie would be comfortable with, with dividing the city into, into two categories for the purposes of regulating trees or whether that gets us into trouble. I was also going to ask Carrie because she came from Paulsbow prior to working for Port Orchard. And I believe they have an entire tree committee and I don't know if it's, they have landmark trees or.
Part of their parks and recs division. We're going to have one of those too.
Yeah, Carrie, so how does Paulsbow treat issues of trees?
Um, I don't know because the tree committee actually wasn't there when I was there.
Okay.
That's, that's something post-me.
I've talked to Matt Barry Erickson about it and it is, in all seriousness, part of their parks and recs division. And that's how it's, it's, so I, I don't know how, how, she says it functions well, but that's a committee and then it's a function of parks and rec.
I have seen sort of tree overlay approaches where you do have different tree regulations in different areas. Save Siamish has a very robust tree requirement. So we could talk about that, Nick, if that's something that you guys would like.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that I anticipated this code to take three months to develop and somehow it stretched out over a year and was getting in the way of what we were trying to get done. So where we ended up on this is certainly not, an unexpected place. And do, would you like to at least vet this with the development community? Or would you like us to consider other approaches first?
I think vetting what you have, just because the planning commission has spent so much time on it, take it to the building community and get their input and see what they have to say.
I mean, if they love it, which I'm not sure that they will. If we, I mean, if we get the, the feedback that I think that we're going to get, I think then maybe we take, you know, Beck or Charlie's approach here that maybe it's creating these overlay districts could be an alternative. But let's do, maybe do the outreach first and see what kind of response we get.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. And I realized that I didn't really dive into the nuts and bolts of how this works. I don't know if you would like that explanation today or if, if, you know, I really wanted more direction because of just my comfort level with what, what we've actually prepared here.
I personally would like to wait until after you've had an opportunity to talk with the developers and see what the final product is going to start to look like.
Okay. We will take it to the KBA at the next opportunity.
Okay, wonderful. We're done with the published agenda. I just want to talk for a minute a little bit about potentially phase three and future meetings and get some feedback from you guys. The OPMA exemption is set to expire on Wednesday. It's likely it'll get extended again. It's also likely that the, that on Friday, the health board will pass a resolution to send our phase three application to the governor's office and/or the state department of health, actually. And I would think some, potentially by next week's meeting, we could be in phase three. We still have a social distancing issue that would be challenging in our council chambers. I think for, so in phase three, we're going to be open, opening our facility for customers. I don't believe we're ready to rent our rooms out or because of cleaning requirements and things of that nature or open up facilities for public use. But I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with what we're doing with Zoom. We're still going to need to provide an opportunity for the public. And if we don't get the OPMA exemption, Brandy and I at a minimum will be in the council chambers to allow public comment and the public to view the meeting. Are you, as council members, comfortable at least through the month of July, continuing in the format that we're doing our meetings and keeping you all remote? I'm seeing a couple heads nod.
Yes.
Okay. It may, you know, we're going to adapt and roll with what we need to do for satisfying the public needs. I think Brandy and I can do that. And, and I think, we'll talk more about this, but I really like the committee meetings and potentially work studies where we're not taking public testimony. The way we're recording this, the way that we can put exhibits on the screen and then become part of the record actually works pretty doggone good. But I think that there's, there's going to be a time though when we're going to want to deliberate and discuss things at the dais like we did in the past. And it's, at some point, we're going to get back there. I just wanted to chat with you for a moment, but it seems to be consensus that we would continue at least through the month of July with virtual meetings then. Unless I, I, I don't see anybody's, all, all heads were bobbing up and down. So, alright, perfect. Jay?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. It's kind of a tangent. But, you know, opening up city hall, have you given any thought to possibility of mandatory face mask?
The governor's order, okay, here's where we're at with that. So we have, and, and it, this has changed a couple of times on us here. So we had one LNI ruling about in the workplace. If you weren't in an office with your door closed, you had to have a face mask on. Now, a LNI, it was two days ago, we got something from LNI. If you have a cubicle, you know, you've got a cubicle farm, as long as that cubicle has four sides to it and it can have an opening that represents a doorway and it's tall enough that, you know, where you're, you know, that it encloses you, that is, that is acceptable. So that employee no longer has to wear their face guard inside of their workspace. Now, when they step out of there into the common areas, we need to have a face guard on. When we are going to have signs that we can't require requesting the public wear a mask in our building. I have the six-foot stickers. Just a second, I'll get one.
Six-foot stickers.
Yeah, I missed some. There's bigger than my head and that's, these are all over the floor in city hall. They've even got our logo on them. I'm quite proud of them. I, I spent about two hours today with a tape measure and, and the thing I'm lacking is fingernails. These are kind of tough to get backing off of them. So at times I had to bring some staff members along to help me peel the back off. And then I learned very early on, you start at one edge and work across or you get air bubbles. But, so we've got number of, you know, stay safe, six feet apart stickers. We've got some window clings ordered. They came in. Unfortunately, they were written backwards and you couldn't see through them, so they weren't very effective. So that printing company is replacing those. I'm not sure that I'll have them by Monday, but that's the goal. And we'll have signage about requesting people wear a mask as they enter city hall. And we've got sneeze guards at all customer service areas. I, I think we're ready to roll. We're ready to have people in the building. Mr. Clausen?
You say that you can't require people to wear masks? Where, why?
Could. We, we could. We've talked about that internally, but we're requesting, much like Trader Joe's.
I appreciate your approach you're taking, but when you made the statement we can't, I was just curious as to why.
There is not, the governor's order doesn't say that we're required. But it does say where we should request and that, and we could choose Costco's position. I, I like the sign I see at Trader Joe's that where they, where they request that and most people are wearing it. So.
Could we offer masks as people enter that don't have them?
We have disposable masks around. Remember, we're going to be in, on the other side of a contained area and we are requiring somebody that comes into our space to wear a mask.
Oh, okay.
But if you're out in the common area of the building, then we're not requiring, we're requesting. I've also, down on the first floor where the police department in, Public Works is putting a, a chain with a carabiner. And we don't want public down in that area of the building anyway. It's just halls and storage area and there's a set of restrooms there. And we're going to make from the police department and down that hallway only non-public areas. So that's a set of restrooms that are reserved for our employees is, is another step we're taking. The other two restrooms on the second and third floor are available to the public. And, and we're also turning off our drinking fountains and putting notices on those.
Thank you.
We've, we've been doing a lot of COVID reopening conversations around here and how to be prepared. So with that, I see Noah's picture, but he hasn't, I haven't seen his face tonight. But anything else for the good of the order? Well, there he is. He's got a haircut. I know we're, we're identifying to a number of, a matter of fact, Noah and I got creative today. We, we've got that, that ruling. We had one employee that's really pushing back on the face mask issue. And we had a partition wall up in, up in the fourth floor and we went up and got it and made an impromptu office for her and she was quite happy today because she got to take her face mask off when she was in her cubicle. So, so we're, we're going to mix up there in the finance. We're going to order some L-shaped partitions so that we can comply with LNI's requirement. These, these partitions that we're talking about and Nick's got a need also will, should all be eligible for our COVID, our CARES Act funding. So. So with that, any other more questions about COVID and, and, or anything else for the good of the order? Noah?
Well, since you brought up the CARES Act, I'll just mention the council. We're working on bringing the contract with Department of Commerce to the council meeting for approval next week. So look to see that on the agenda.
And I've kind of vetted with a couple of council members too. Talking to KETA, the, they had concerns with our small business grant program. And I've tweaked that a little bit and I got a circle back with, with KETA to make it a rent relief program because the documentation for eligibility, what we need to gather is much more streamlined, just a copy of a lease and maybe some business verification documents versus receipts related to things they purchase and so on and so forth. So we're looking for this to be, we want to make sure that we get, this money is going to be out the door and we're getting reimbursed and we want to make sure that we get reimbursed. We don't want to put any, in, in any situation where we don't get reimbursed. We want to avoid that. So Nick, you raised your hand?
Yeah, sorry, I can't figure out the mute button. The, we have a website live now for the downtown plan update and it is linked on the top of the city webpage. I believe the Facebook notice will go out tomorrow, but the survey is live. And so if anyone is interested, item number one on the top of the Port Orchard website concerns our, our subarea planning effort.
Yeah, and Ryan and I and Janine were working on a draft press release that got sent to you, Nick. We need some input on what an planned action EIS is. So we're trying to put that into plain English for the rest of us in the world that aren't planners. So. But we'd like to get a press release out about it that tomorrow if we could too.
Okay. I don't know if I saw something come to my email, but let's check, let's touch base tomorrow.
I'll send, I'll, I can send mine. I'm pretty sure. I thought it did. Maybe you got it, got omitted. So I'll get it to you. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
Mayor, are we still recording?
We are.
Okay.
I'm, I'll, I'll end this meeting if Nick gave me the meeting back.
Yeah, I'll stop the recording.